AJ, we ready to do this thing?
We are ready.
Um, then I am going to call the work session for the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley. Stare.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
And Pictionary.
Here.
All right, it looks like we have two items tonight. The first item is the fiscal year 2022 draft community development block grant one-year action plan with Aaron Feifield. So Aaron, you want to take us away here?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. So I think we have 20 minutes for this item. There's a lot in your packet. So I'm gonna sort of give you a high level and then to the last question. So if I skip over anything, please ask, but just wanted to give you the time. So in some, I'm here because each year, the city of Springfield receives an allocation of federal community development block grant funds to address affordable housing and community development needs primarily for low-income households in Springfield. As part of the federal process to receive these funds, the city must develop a one-year action plan, the draft you have before you, through a public process identifying programs and projects to address community needs. In fiscal year 2022, we estimate the city is going to have about $740,000 to put toward these kind of programs. So I came to council in January, asking direction for a draft plan. At the time, you supported the city's home repair program for low-income households, as well as continued support for nonprofit services through the Human Services Commission, and then the cost to administer the program. You directed staff to put the remaining $400,000 open to local nonprofits through a request for proposals. So that's, we released the RFP, the Request for Proposals, and received nine applications totaling over $1 million in requests. And so as part of the public process, those nine applications went before the Community Development Advisory Committee, the City Council Advisory Committee, and they evaluated those applications based on the evaluation criteria set, set, set in the application, and also had a Q and A with applicants during their public meeting in order to sort of get at any additional questions they had. You'll see in your packet a summary of those nine applications, as well as a sort of summary of what those evaluation scores were by the, by the committee as a whole. So as part of this public process, the committee also held two different public hearings on two different nights, and you'll also see a summary of those public comments in the pack as well. So on April 7th, the committee met, given all of this information, to discuss how they wanted to make a recommendation to city, to city council on how to allocate these funds, $740,000 toward affordable housing and community development projects. So that's what you see in your packet. The committee went ahead and decided to make two recommendations, a Plan A and a Plan B, as they are calling it. You'll see that in two different columns, I believe, on the last page of the packet. I would say the, the thing to keep in mind for both of those recommendations is that they fully support, I would say, two different projects in particular. One, Square One Villages, sort of an innovative model to support homeownership through a cooperative housing model, as well as Catholic Community Services of Lane County. Their project is to create a permanent home for Oasis, the, their effort to support homeless families with children in Springfield. And so the committee went ahead and wanted to support both of those projects. You'll see Plan B was saying, rather than spread the peanut butter and only partially fund a few different projects, sort of creating risk on how those projects might be fully funded. The committee said, knowing council support for Oasis, let's go ahead and fully fund Oasis as a recommendation, just to give council some options on, you know, want to sort of allocate the funds. So I think I'll stop there and let you all, and, you know, ask me any questions. I will say what I'm looking for you from tonight is a recommendation, or not a recommendation, sorry, a sort of direction on how you would like to allocate these funds, and I will bring that back to you on May 3rd during regular session for a motion. We need to submit the plan to HUD by May 15th. So that is the discussion tonight with direction for approval on May 3rd. So.
Merrily.
Um, I just a couple of questions. One, um, do we have a list or how the, how the points were applied?
Yeah, with the breakdown of the evaluation, is that, yeah.
We got the scores. We, you gave us the scores, but what, what kind of points were applied to create those scores?
Sure. So there were five different, I should have included that, sorry about that. There were five different categories. We're talking project description, project as a whole, the population that the project is serving, the project readiness, is it ready to proceed? Does it have its funding? Does it know how, you know, who's going to be executing the project? The finance plan, is there risk in terms of, are you still fundraising? Do you know what your financing plan is? And then the project team, how experienced is the sort of proposed applicant in carrying out this kind of project? So each of those five categories had five points maximum, and so 25 points was the total.
Okay, that, the, because I, I'm, I'm very appreciative of the, uh, recommendation for Oasis. Just having heard a presentation earlier today of Oasis being handled all over the place, people having their offices up the block and everything like that, it'd be wonderful to be able to get them in one location and, and have the, the services that they're providing in a unified way. So that would be, that would be awesome. And so I really appreciate the group's recommendation there. The only thing I would like to maybe reconsider or look at is the possibility of the, the paint for Emerald Arts Center. I realize it's not a homeless situation or an unhoused situation, but it is downtown building, and it does need to be kept up, or we're not going to have that, we're not going to have that building. So, and it's not that much money. So I just toss that into the, into the conversation as a possibility of maybe looking at, figuring out how, how we might be able to, to apply money towards that.
Leonard. Hey, um, so, um, thanks for the presentation, Aaron. Um, the, the recommended funding that I'm reading on the, on the attachment here is, are we going to have to winnow this down at all? Is there any, are there any items that we're going to need to take away in order to make the budget work?
So in the, maybe, I'm wondering if AJ could pull it up. I don't know if she's got the packet handy, but looking at the two columns, Plan A and Plan B, you'll see that Plan A and Plan B each sort of keep, keep the recommendation within the funding line of 740,000, but you'll see they don't recommend funding everything that came in. So there were nine applications that came in. One ended up rescinding their eight applications to work with, and you'll see neither column A nor column B have a recommendation for those three projects, but each of those, Plan A and Plan B, both sort of, you don't have to winnow that down. It just, you know, in this case, like to speak to Counselor Woodrow's point, like the Emerald Arts Center wasn't recommended by.
Oh, I see.
So if you wanted to include something else, we'd need to, we need to play around with it. So maybe, yeah, maybe we could just talk about what, which of these projects you would like to fund, and then we could see how the math adds up. And I have an Excel spreadsheet that it might be, if we get to it, we can use it to make it easier to calculate, but, um, yeah. So it's kind of a which projects would you like to fund?
Sure. Okay, well, I'm, I'm looking at the coun- council's choice for Plan B. I would like to see some money go to Springfield Eugene Tenants Association. They're a, a new group, and they're a group that's sort of finding its footing right now. I would like to see some money go to them. And so I guess, if I'm given a choice, I would rather go with Plan B.
Corey.
And Counselor Woodrow is making a good point about Emerald Arts Center, too.
Corey.
Thank you. So first of all, I wanted to say, I totally snuck in to the meeting, to the last deliberation meeting for the, the, the committee, which I really appreciated because it gave me a chance to listen to the deliberation, and I wanted to extend thanks to that committee because they were very thorough, and they hashed out of a lot of, you know, ideas and differences, and I appreciate, I just, I really appreciated it. And being a new counselor, it gave me a chance to see how that fits in with the Home Consortium and other things. So I really appreciated that. I think that I, um, I also, I really appreciate Plan A, because I do not think that we need to fully fund the Oasis project, because I think that that is a, a project and organization that has access to different funding. And I believe that when we were talking about it at that meeting, or they were, other folks were talking, and I was eavesdropping. They did say in the proposal that they had other opportunities for funding to put with the funding. So I feel comfortable with not funding the Catholic Community Services at the full level, and I want to echo what Leonard said, that I also would like to see, because I think the Springfield Eugene Tenant Association is doing some really important work, and will continue to as we come out of COVID around that. So if there's a little bit of wiggle room, not that I'm against art and art center, but I don't have as strong of feelings around that one, but I do around the tenant association. So, so mine is sort of a combination of A and B, I guess, in that I'm totally fine with just not funding fully Catholic Community Services, but looking, is there a way to sneak in a little extra? Thank you.
Steve.
All right, I, it's not so practical, but the Art Center is important, because it's a downtown image that we would get away from this. So we need, I think we need to pay some attention to that if we can, because it's a visual thing, but it doesn't, doesn't get people homes, I know that, but it's downtown or it's Springfield. So, that's all.
So, and I think I've got just kind of two observations for, like, I, I agree on the Emerald Arts Center, right? Like, that is a, that is a building we need to really take care of to make sure that it, you know, maintains its role in, in downtown. The other piece, I guess, question that I had, Aaron, is how much, like, the county is coming into a ton of funding related to human services as part of relief legislation. How much of this is, would qualify for, for a supplemental sort of application in, in that process?
Great question. Um, I would say the Public Services Springfield Eugene Tenant Association, the Oregon Law Center, and Daisy Chain would all qualify for sort of, when I posed the question, like, does your project, is your project a response to, or connection to coronavirus in terms of either supporting people who have been impacted by it, or they had answered yes. So they all would be potential if you wanted to fund them, they could come back through a different funding source. Emerald Arts Center would not be available in, because they did not have a direct connection.
So my, so here's my preference here. Like, there's a lot of good programs, and I saw the youth ERA one down there, which has been what, you know, a, a center that we've needed for a long time. I would like to fund Catholic Community Services at the full level, and then squeeze in the Emerald Arts Center. And like C Street, like, that project has been a pretty innovative thing that's been out there the last couple of years. I'd love to get it across the finish line. Um, my, my agreement with, and I would say, given, like, CDBG funds are, you know, sort of really hard to sort of come by, I think that the tenants association has got a good ask, and I would, and I would propose what we do is we send a letter of recommendation that they get funded through the, the county process, which is going to have a lot more service expansions to it, and we submit a letter of support for them, and probably the youth ERA to say, hey, these are good, good projects, please take a hard look at them, and as a council, take the opportunity to lobby for them when we talk about county human services funding. Um, Damian?
Yes, a quick question. I'm just curious. So for number five, and so Oregon Law Center and Springfield Eugene Tenants Association, to me, they seem like they coincide in some way, uh, meaning that, you know, if we support CETA, uh, I mean, and, and just based on what I've seen, and, you know, who I've talked to, since I've been on council, there have been a lot of situations where people need some type of legal counsel, especially, you know, BIPOC individuals. And so to me, it seems like those kind of coincide in some way, and even if there isn't funding for one of them, how can the other potentially piggyback or, you know, establish more of a stronger partnership? Because to me, it seemed like if they worked together, there could have been a greater chance for funding, because those two overlap so much. So, yeah, I mean, I just kind of want to, to say that, because I think the civil rights piece is very, very, you know, crucial when it comes to any type of housing, and, you know, it's a privilege that some of us have never had to utilize a lawyer, you know, or had a situation where we haven't, you know, we've been treated unfairly, or at least not yet. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think five and six together, personally, if we're going to focus on CETA in any shape or form, we need to figure out how to throw the Oregon Law Center, and if not them, then what type of legal representation would some of these tenants potentially have?
John. Joe.
I'm not trying to interrupt. Damian, I didn't know if you're done yet, but I've having some video stuff going on, so I'm still here. I just can't see any, or I can see everybody, but you can't see me.
So are you ready to make some comments, Joe?
I could, if I, if there, if I'm in the right spot. Okay.
Go ahead.
So I agree, Sean, with what you've been, been saying. I think there's other sources that we should give some recommendation, memos or letters of recommendation for funding for those, for that tenant or renter assistance, legal assistance program that they have started up. I think we should fully fund the Catholic Community Services, and basically how you lined that out, Sean, is I'm, I'm in agreement with that. That's the route I'd like to take. I'm done.
All right, thank you. I know we're kind of all over the place, Aaron.
Yep. It's weird that it has, it has a, you know, council recommendation, Plan A and Plan B, and really, council can do a Plan, a Plan C if we wish, you know, and so.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So, you know, it, it's not like we're locked in. I mean, it's, it's funny how we're kind of negotiating back and forth. I have some sort of plan. It's like, well, no, wait a second. They're just recognizing some programs, and they think that they should throw money this direction for each one of these programs, and it really is up to us to come up with whatever plan we want. And so, but, but obviously taking into consideration their, their conversations and, and, and going through that whole process, which I don't want to minimize, but, but I still don't feel like we, you know, we shouldn't be feeling stuck with a particular recommendation. But I like Sean's, it's definitely a hybrid of those, and, and I fully support that, that recommendation.
Merrily, I think you had your hand up next.
Yes, um, in human services this morning, Steve outlined, there's going to be $61.5 million coming to Lane County for rent assistance related to COVID. So I think that's where, that's going to be our key for everything, for the CETA, for the law issues that Damian mentioned. If, if there's something they're not covered, if there's something in the law issues that aren't covered, we can, we can revisit and see if there's some way we can supplement from the city. But I think we've got that $61 million is a heck of a lot of money coming into the county for, for rental assistance from A to Z. 25% of it, which is going to be able to be available all the way through to the end of 2024. So I think it would be worthwhile, my, where I'm coming from right now, is it would be worthwhile to support that, and like you said, advocate for that, that money coming, going towards CETA, and going towards the law, and then putting this other money towards the immediate Oasis. I just, I think Oasis is our core here in Springfield, and I really think we need to fund it.
Steve, go ahead.
Hey.
Yeah, I thought you had your hand up.
I did, I did. Uh, the numbers I've seen in the past of the home repair program, it's a great program, but as I remember, people aren't using it very much. Why is that?
Oh, people are very much using the home repair program. It's the shop program, the down payment assistance under the traditional single-family homeownership model. We haven't been able to use that program, which is where, yeah.
I must got my numbers mixed up.
Yeah, yeah. The home repair program has certainly been used, and that isn't a recommendation for funding the shop program.
Okay.
Right, Damian?
Yeah, so Counselor Woodrow, you said something about that money being related to COVID, and, and I'm curious, is, is all that money, I mean, does it, is it have to be related to COVID? And if so, how can we determine, I mean, who, who's the determining factor if, you know, something around houselessness or whatever is related to COVID? Like, who's the deciding factor if all that money is directly attached to COVID, or is that just one of the caveats?
It's coming, it's coming, this, that particular amount of money is coming in specifically for rental assistance. It's going to help with the eviction status, the transition, you know, the whole, the whole sphere of issues that people ran into once COVID hit and extended the, the no evictions and all, all the whole, whole body of, of it. But, so that goes specifically towards Lane, towards, to Lane County in regards to rental assistance, and it will come through, I imagine, various, various parts of Lane County. Some of it will come through Human Services, some of it will be with other, um, parts of Lane County, other people, and I'm not, I can't remember Sarah's title, but she would be involved in that, too. The commissioners would be involved. There would be a whole range of people that would be involved in determining how that gets filtered through.
Yeah, and, and I think it's critical to remember, right? Like, in a lot of those seats, we get votes at the table, and the county really is the, the primary lead for distributing human services, services at, at the county level.
Right.
Um, okay, so I'm looking around for any other comments, and also, like, I'm more than happy to sign the letter from the rest of us, supporting, supporting the, the Law Center and the Tenants Association in their request, but I, I want to leave it for the option. We can attach everybody's signature if that would be something they'd be interested in. Go ahead, Aaron.
Um, I'll just, I, I'll just highlight for that piece, there's actually a portion of these CARES relief, the coronavirus relief funds, that the city does have some decisions on themselves. It's not all being handled at the county. So I actually will be coming back to you in the next two months to sort of get your direction on how you would like to allocate funds that are CDBG eligible tied to COVID. So I think we could hold off on the letter, and I'll actually just be bringing a proposal to you to say, do you want to fund? But I'm hearing now this legal piece of it, both CETA and the Law Center, being part of that discussion. So we can talk about what that looks like, but before the letter goes out, I think you guys will have an opportunity to discuss it.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
Oh, so that means if we don't fund some of these, we need to tell them we're not eliminating them. It's just, we're just moving them to another funding part. I want them to know that.
There's an opportunity for that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's maybe recap what we're saying, bring forward, so we can kind of get some head nods, because we'll get an official vote, you know, and conversation in a regular session in two weeks. So, Aaron, do you want to recap what we think?
Yeah, so if I'm looking at Plan B essentially, from the CDAC laid out, I'm seeing, uh, let me just pull up the numbers, so we have them. I'm seeing the funding for the home repair program at $90,000. I'm seeing a down payment assistance for Square One Villages project at $63,000. I'm seeing the nonprofit Human Services Commission recommendation at 100, 105,48. I am seeing a fully funded Catholic Community Services program at $332,492. And then I am seeing the, and correct me if I misheard, that's an Emerald Arts Center funded program under slum and blight, and that would be a total of 22,500. I guess I'll say the remainder of the RFP is what that's going to come to. I think there's only 22 and some change. And then the 132,000 for, $730 for administration.
And with a plan to come back with CARES additional COVID funding for CDBG, and talk about the other, the other couple of projects, then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking around.
Have a quick one?
Sure, Joe.
Sorry, sorry for interruption. My waving of hands didn't work. Um, so I'm sorry to go back around, but I was just, you made that comment that it's, that the home repair program is, is very well used, utilized, which was my understanding as well. And has that, has that account get zeroed out, or is that, is that surplus, is it at the break-off point now?
That's a great question. So each year, we try and anticipate what exactly, I think we overestimated what we thought we would spend this year. So that 90,000 allocation is with an estimated $30,000 remaining for this year. So we've anticipated, we're anticipating within a full calendar, or within 12 months of spending about $120,000 for that. And so then we estimated, how much do we think we'll have available July 1, and how much would we need to estimate to fully fund it at $120,000? So that's where the 90,000 came in.
Okay, so that's kind of a misnomer when it comes to looking at that number, because next year, we can say, oh, hey, last year was 90,000, but we may have spent 130. So it's given a kind of a skewed number or appearance that it's not as used as it truly is. So.
Okay, that's a good point.
So I just want to make sure that's fully funded and, and at a level where it doesn't get tapped out.
Yeah, I think what I do, I tend during the works, or during the draft in January, to go into what I think the more details are, and you're right, by the time we come around to April, I'm like, here's what we are, and, you know, in my head, it's already there. But, okay, I will keep that.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We're good, Aaron. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all.
Uh, the second item is the annual use of force report 2020. It, we're going to start with Nancy, and then she's going to hand it off to Matt Newark. Nancy?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give some opening comments to this presentation, to sort of frame up the issue before you this evening. This is the Springfield Police Department's first time making a use of force presentation to the council in this manner. So this is a starting point tonight, and we're going to use your feedback tonight and, and our experience to move, to perfect our processes. So as you're considering this report, know that this is our first attempt, and we're, we're moving on. Um, the presentation itself, the data was derived from a current reporting structure that really does need to be improved and updated, and, and we, that came to play as SPD was looking at, at pulling these numbers and, and collecting the data that we really do have an outdated system. Fortunately, the SPD has a proposed solution for that, that they will be covering in this presentation tonight. So again, just recognizing we're at the beginning stages. However, the police department has already taken some steps to create a formal use of force review structure. They're going to go over that structure in this presentation this evening. I do want to add that this morning, I met with SPD Command Staff, and they have really demonstrated a forward-looking attitude in improving policies, procedures, and practices. I, I felt very encouraged after our discussion this morning. I see a real willingness to, to look inwardly and, and improve, and also, and, um, working with you, the council, and, and the community. So I'm very committed to working with the police department in this area. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
Hey, I'm Lieutenant Matt, and I worked, we met a couple sessions ago. Hey, I'm Lieutenant Matt Niyward. We met a couple sessions ago in another virtual format like this. I'm the jail commander for the Springfield Police Department. And as you know, over the last few weeks, been the acting chief. Also with me is Lieutenant Crowley. He's the patrol commander. He ties in very well to this topic of conversation tonight. And in fact, chairs one of the new committees and has direct impact on a lot of the decisions we're making around here as it relates to use of force, training and equipment, policies. In fact, he played a major role in revising, rewriting our new use of force policy. Before we get to into this, this evening, although it's not necessarily part of this use of force review or analysis, I want to touch on something that's in the forefront in the national media right now, which is one of the recent tragedies in Minnesota involving what they're saying is an accidental discharge of a firearm leading to the death of a citizen. In which here's, I want to armchair quarterback their incident, but it appears the intent was to use a taser rather than a firearm. Lieutenant Crowley, the day that that news broke, communicated with our patrol sergeants and encouraged them, ordered them to emphasize how officers carry a taser and rely back on initial training they had since a number of years ago that we put tasers into play as one of our tools and the options we gave the officers. That, along those lines, the tasers we carry are yellow, they're not black. They have a laser sight type on them, makes them stand out even more. And the officers are required to carry them on what we call your, where your offhand is or your non-support side opposite from your firearm. So in briefings right now, over the last week, the officer, the sergeants have talked to all the officers and reemphasized the difference between how a taser is carried, how a firearm is carried. If Lieutenant Crowley has more on that, allow him to weigh in on that real quick before we get started.
And in addition to the briefing trainings, textbook, PowerPoints, all the talking points to go along with this, we will also have a revised hands-on training in which officers will be required to demonstrate efficiency annually, like they do anyway, but reemphasizing proper draw, proper technique, proper identification of all their equipment to include the taser.
One of the first things that I want to talk about is the office in, within the police department that's responsible for preparing this annual use of force analysis. Again, I appreciate City Manager's comments and her understanding and your understanding that this is the department's first attempt at this. We probably didn't do as good a job as we thought we would do or hoped we would do. And going through this process, we realized where some of our weaknesses were, where our downfall far. And already coming out of that have made some improvements of how and why this whole process and this product will be better next year as a result. The office that's responsible for this work product is the professional standard sergeant, Sergeant Mike Massey. He actually initially had planned to be part of this presentation with the chief. Unfortunately, he's unavailable, he's out of the area. So I got his report a couple weeks ago, along with some notes from him that he wanted me to share. He's not able to share the way he went about putting this report together. We looked at agencies our size in Oregon for examples of their annual use of force report. The best one we found that we thought they did the best job with was Albany Police Department. It was very thorough, detailed, had a better appearance than this. He tried to model it after it, but he found early on the process that he had to go through to get these results was difficult and didn't work well. He worked with our records supervisor and accessed our records management system, RMS, to find the, the police reports that detailed use of force or use of force incidents. He found three hundred and two of those individual instances. And there wasn't a good way that the data was tracked to pull it and transfer it into a report that made sense. So unfortunately, he had to go through and read all three hundred and two of those reports and go through himself on an Excel spreadsheet. And he created a checklist for different types of uses of force and checked the ones that applied and tracked those, those numbers to put this report together. He was clearly frustrated in doing so. And during this process, reached out to Albany Police Department and Eugene Police Department and asked how they produced something like this, why we were having such difficulty. And they use a program that's called IA Pro. Sergeant Massey set up a demo with IA Pro that we just went through a few weeks ago, and it's a fantastic product. It tracks very clearly, tracks use of force, use of canines, complaints, discipline, injuries to citizens, injuries to officers, commendations that officers receive. The second part of the product that goes along with IA Pro that these agencies use and have success with is called Blue Teams. Blue Teams is used at the line level by the officers. It's additional data entry that they do in addition to writing their police report. They have another system, Blue Teams, that they access. And it's, it's almost as simple as checkboxes that they go through and document the type of force used. And there's literally silhouettes that they can click on, you know, a front silhouette of a human body, a back silhouette. And they can literally click on different parts of the body and that produces dropdowns that they identify what that injury is, that they documented on that part of the body. What use of force caused that injury to them and/or the arrestee. And they can cut and paste their police report narratives, go along with it, to offer explanations. There also offers the opportunity to download and attach video, which will tie in great with the body cams and in-car video that we're going to, they can pull those over and add it. Digital photos and any other documents they need to add. Like example, right now, the way we do things is not efficient. They document it in a police report, but photos get lodged separately. So sometimes a sergeant supervisor might review a police report. And there's mention of photos, but they don't actually have the photos unless they go into evidence, pull in themselves and look at them. Or if a taser is used, a download of information from that taser is done. That also gets lodged in evidence where now it could be digitally, that document can be digitally attached. So when the supervisor goes in to review the reports, they can pull this up, look through everything. It tracks and documents which supervisor looked at it, when and why, they can add any comments. They can return it to the patrol officer to make the changes that are recommended, or they can approve it and pass it on. And then it would go to Sergeant Massey's office, all of them will go to Sergeant Massey's office and be reviewed by him and then lieutenants and ultimately the chief ones that rise to the level of need, additional scrutiny or there's concern over policy violations or violations of law. It's a great product. We are already pursuing that with the support of the city manager and risk management. We're hoping by summer sometime, we can have that up and running. Have the company come out and provide training to command staff in the department and get that going to improve this. We know we need it, we have to have it. Some other things I want to point out that Sergeant Massey wanted me to talk about in terms of looking at the stats in this report. Because of the way he had to do it manually, he's essentially created the, a list of different types of use of force. Right, A Pro would be more specific and the company has generated that rather than Sergeant Massey creating a list. He had to, he had to read these reports and make his own interpretation in some instances, what type of force was used. He gave me an example that an officer might describe that they chased somebody and tackled them. There isn't an option of use of force of a tackle typically in police work. So he had to identify and determine if that was a push or a shove or a lake sweep. But that's where some of these titles came from and where the numbers came from. So again, we know it's not perfect, he knows it's not perfect. Getting into the report and some of the numbers, we wanted to be as transparent as possible. Some of the agencies whose reports we reviewed for ideas of what type of force needed to be included in these, some did and some didn't use displays of force. And by that, I mean a, a display of a taser or a display of a handgun. The force wasn't used, but the weapon was displayed. We included those numbers, they make our numbers pretty high overall, and we can, we'll get into those and talk about it here momentarily. We left them in. That's why I want to let you know, in terms of transparency, we think that's a use of force. Whether the escalated decision or situation or not is up to debate, but we're leaving those numbers in. Part of the settlement that led to the policy revisions and requirements for us to produce this document that you have in front of you, hopefully you've had a chance to review. Another area that we already recognize as a weakness is our force review committee. Again, a big reason that I wanted Lieutenant Crowley with me tonight is he rewrote the policy and put together the committee, is the chair of that committee. An area of weakness, downfall that we had related to this is one of the requirements that we totally agree with and support and welcome is that the committee members receive specific training. Unfortunately, due to COVID, the trainings weren't being offered or kept getting canceled. I'm going to let Lieutenant Crowley speak a little bit now about the force review committee and the fact that the members for that actually have training scheduled now due to some of the COVID protocols letting up a little bit.
Thank you all. Of the standing members of the committee, they'll include myself, the patrol commander. Secondarily, the defensive tactics use of force instructor, and thirdly, the firearms sergeant or supervisor. Be the three primary members in the committee that are required to receive the training as well as the training itself. We say training broadly in this job, there's a lot of different ways to get training. This particular training will cover use of force events, not just deadly force events, but all use of force events as well as administrative investigations. I think the key component to conducting an administrative investigation is to be able to provide feedback, recommendations and identify flaws in an incident that's being investigated. It's not simply signing off on something and saying, but it's within, within policy. I think it's important that we identify things we need to work on, best practices in the field, different updates in law. That's what this training will provide. At a minimum, all three of us will attend that. Additionally, one of us at this time, it'll be the defensive tactics instructor, will be considered a CIT expert. He'll, he'll receive additional training and crisis intervention. So we can plug that component into our force review and make sure that we're analyzing de-escalation, any kind of crisis intervention techniques. So as part of this process, we'll be reviewing numerous types of uses of force and making, there's a format that's provided within policy now, called a template of topics and items that are required to be in a report that's compiled by this force review committee. And that report will be forwarded to the chief of police for follow-up and recommendations. It's almost tying up a loose end. Whereas instead of just writing a memo and sending it off and assuming somebody's read it, it's going to require a response from the chief of police to identify an issue, agree with an assessment and bring some closure to the use of force review. Quite frankly, we're looking forward to it. I, it's, it's going to be some more time and more work, but how it's going to, you know, help the whole department as a whole in identifying training needs, shortcomings, policy violations, helping hold everybody accountable. It's going to be a key component to the new policy.
Looking at the numbers a little bit in the use of force, the annual use of force report. I won't harp on it too much, the numbers are what they are. We chose, which, again, trying to be transparent, we chose to put higher numbers in there than some agencies would. I think they need to be in there. But I won't talk too much, the numbers are what they are. I won't talk about how they could have been lower adjusted. We left them how they are.
Lieutenants, do you want questions as we go, or do you want to walk your way through?
If somebody, if somebody has a hand raising a question, we have the screen in front of us, so we're happy to answer questions as we go.
Some of us don't have screen or hands.
Go ahead, Mary Lee. And then that sounds like Joe wants to get in after this.
Yeah, Mary Lee stuck her hand up, so I'll go after Mary Lee when she turns her microphone on.
I had just one quick question in your, in your, is the force review committee. I appreciate the deliberation and how you've got it set up and what happens to the information that you come to and send on through. My concern, I'm not necessarily concerned, my question is in regard to how, how does that kind of information or report get out to the public or is it relevant to get out to the public? I, I totally appreciate the fact that you folks on the review committee will have training to understand what to do and how to put that together and the, and the recommendations that you come to. I'm just, I'm looking at it from, if I, if I pulled myself back and make myself a member of the public, I'm looking at it from that standpoint, going how, how do we convey that to the, to the citizens? How do we convey that to the community?
I think the, thank you, Councilor Woodrow. I think the easiest way to do this is through this document that we provided you, the use of force analysis, the annual report on use of force. It's going to allow us to delve deeper into these numbers and say, out of all these numbers, the committee reviewed X number of cases. And within those cases, found a trend about this was lacking, this tactic was unsuccessful. This policy was a problem, needs to be revamped or rewritten. So that'll be our mechanism through this, providing this to you as a representative of the citizens of Springfield of showing how we're addressing the issues identified by the committee.
And that's an annual presentation to the council, so that would, it would come out in that. And I realize, like I said, I realize this is the first, first report and there's a lot of, there's a lot of holes there for this kind of thing. That's why I was asking my question. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I have, I have several questions, guys. So you're ready? All right. No, I, I'm very, very pleased with seeing this report. I, I think I completely agree. I think it is merely a start-off point. It's not as complete as I would hope, but it's definitely an excellent start in the right direction. That being said, I have a couple of comments and recommendations. For example, the, the breakdown where you have on page of attachment on page four ten, you have a breakdown as to ethnicity at the top and then age factor at the bottom below it. But it would be interesting to see, and it's, and it's a little into the weeds, but I think it would be very, much more transparent as well. That if you had a breakdown by age, by ethnicity as well. So if you had, you had, you know, your, your group of twenty-one to thirty of a hundred and seven incidences of uses of force in that age group. So what percentage of ethnicity or race is of that hundred and seven people? So if you had, for example, you know, twelve of the thirteen blacks were in that age group versus elderly, you know, more older crowd. So we can start to kind of get a model as to where a lot of that force is happening, perhaps some age groups that could be a pointer for training. So you can focus your training, using even some age groups to help, to help that training relating to those, to the age groups, so to speak. If you're, if you're having a lot of use of force with a particular race and they're elderly, for example, then, then that may be a pointer towards, okay, what kind of training do we need? What are we missing with that age group in that, of that race? So that being said, and moving over to page five, where it says, level of force used, I'm looking down that list. I would recommend, and for people that aren't familiar with some of the lingo, is that Is that where you say, for example, it says, um. Taser deployed, taser displayed. I totally get exactly what you're saying, but. Theoretically, a taser can be displayed and deployed at the same time and someone may misread that. But you may be able to say like taser displayed only. So it doesn't, so, so what, so those numbers aren't counted as a deployment. Same thing with firearms. And, and then, um, moving further on into some of the minutia, it's, um. You have, you have what the, you know, what's not mentioned is, is pain compliance techniques. It's mentioned only where it says bent wrist lock. But we also know, and I know that escort, escort holds. Um, many of them are in the realm of pain compliance as opposed to just simply. People look at that and say, hey, we're, you know, holding his hand and walking down the street as an escort, um, versus pain compliance. Does that make any sense to kind of separate? Whether, you know, cause one would, would not necessarily think that. An escort hold would be force and people may be looking at that saying, okay, well, why is it in the force? You know, a, a reporting of a force. Situation where it doesn't appear to be, it kind of looks almost sugar coated by using escort hold. So I just call it the way it is, just, you know, pain compliance technique. And, and that, that takes a bunch of into the same, same realm. Um, two things also is that. It assumes based on those numbers that there is no use of batons during twenty twenty. And also assumes that there is no use of pepper spray. I assume that's still carried.
So I can probably touch on that a little bit, counselor. Pepper spray has. Almost gone by the wayside. Uh, by, by law enforcement around here, due to the effects it often has on the officers, assisting officers using it. I myself haven't deployed pepper spray in probably seventeen, eighteen years. As far as batons go, uh, I did speak with Sergeant Massey inquiring about batons, cause I wondered the same thing. Um, as far as using our collapsible ass batons, there were no deployments of batons being used as use of force last year. Most officers are using their batons to do things such as clear brush. And after, you know, foot pursuit of the suspect, clearing branches and brush out of the way as they're going through a, a rural area. So that's.
Right.
As far as arrests go, those haven't popped up.
Okay, uh, which is fine, but maybe that may be, uh, worth mentioning somewhere in the narrative. That, um, the, these type of options were not used although available. So folks know that those still are their force options are available, but. Were elected not to be used. Um, it is, it's very concerning though. I know that, I know exactly what you're saying with pepper spray that they've fallen to the wayside because I saw. That the moment. The, um, taser came out is the moment OC went away, so to speak. And so it's really a substitute that's being used and I, I, um. I know exactly what you're talking about. I, I, yeah, you know, I know. And with the pepper spray, and I think that it's something that may be worth revisiting. Um, it's, it's a pain compliance technique. It is not a chemical. It's an organic ingredient. It doesn't hurt people physically. It hurts, but it doesn't hurt them. And so we don't have an injury with pepper spray, so to speak, as opposed to, I'm looking at the focus blows. And all the related injuries with focus blows with the subjects receiving a focus blow. And the officers delivering focus blows. When I know that there's gonna be cases where pepper spray could have been used in lieu of a focus blow. And I think that that. You know, should be a reminder to folks that, yeah, you may not have used it. And yeah, it's, it stinks. It sucks. It's, it's very uncomfortable. But it's a lot better than an injury. And I, and it's just something I, I think that needs to be brought back. And if we're not, if someone's gonna make a determination that they just don't like to use it, then why do we have it? Why do we carry it and take it off the belt? And that would be, I think, would be really crazy to take that option off the belt because then we do take an option away that could be used. So, something to consider. I think it's, there, there's a lot of, uh. I don't, I, I guess thought process behind that. And I, I, I get it. The, the popularity of OC is not there. But we either not use it at all and take it away, or if we have it, then I think it should be used when appropriate. I, I completely.
Can I respond to a couple of things?
Sure, sure, Matt. Sure, Matt.
Um, regarding some of the stat-based questions you have, I absolutely agree with you and. Taking notes while you're talking about combining, um. Ages and races, I think is a great idea. Um. And the IA pro is a perfect fix for that because you can. When you generate any kind of report, whether it's an annual report or an individual report on an officer. Or somebody that's been arrested, if you're searching by that criteria, you can get. Any kind of data you want. You literally just check the boxes. So that would be a really piece of, uh. An easy piece of data to add and capture. Uh, the same with differentiating between whether something's deployed or displayed. I agree with that. And I want to touch base on, uh, you mentioned focus blows or, or strikes as a use of force. Our use of force instructor, our sergeant that supervises our defensive tactics program. Uh, he's a newer sergeant. He's very motivated. He's very, very on board. To making any changes are they gonna benefit us? He's very open, open to recommendations. From city council, from city leadership. He's already taken upon himself to look at this report and find some areas that were deficient in training and our tactics. And actually met with me last week and brought one of the defensive tactics instructors with him who has a wrestling background. And they're concerned with the focus blows or strikes with hands and knees. Uh, they don't, they don't look good to a bystander or to a witness. And they aren't always effective in gaining compliance and often lead to injury of an arrestee and or. An officer. Officers are hurting their hands and they're hurting people by hitting with them where. Their new idea that they proposed to me last week, getting back to that is introducing some jujitsu techniques. I'm not a mi- mixed martial art expert or. By any means, but there are some basic moves that police are going to. Uh, in terms of pain compliance that you were talking about, Counselor Pictionary, that tie directly into that. And so our defensive tactics instructors are gonna receive. Training on that and incorporate a program here based on a program he founded in an agency back in Georgia that tried it. Bring in, starting with the new officers that come on board during their orientation training. Incorporating with them and doing an hourly, once a week training during the first. However, many weeks, months and adding the department on as we go. But I think it's a great idea and it gets away from. Some of the. Perceived use of force in the community that. Doesn't really benefit us. It, it looks bad and there's a better way to do it.
Right, yeah. And, and street brawls are, as far as I'm concerned, um. Very avoidable and they look terrible and, and historically out of. Many, many years of me observing and you observing. We all have to admit that, that more likely than not, someone's gonna get injured when we use focus blows typically. It tip, and I'm not against them, how, as long as that level of, of risk is justified. To protect even the suspect and the officer, but given the circumstances. From preventing to have to go to a higher level of force. I, I get that and I have no problem with that whatsoever. I would rather. Uh, have someone get hit really hard with a fist as opposed to getting hit really hard with a baton. I, I mean, I, I get that or even shot. So, uh, it, but there's a place, I think that, that needs to be further defined. Um, so that's the right, that's given the right direction. I'm really looking forward to the following report to see how much this has progressed, but, but this is a, a great foundation. I do want to add also that, um, in the use of force reporting in that program, um, was I plus or I pro? So, uh, I think it would be wise if we had, um, required if there is a complaint of injury. Versus a, a diagnosis of injury. So that way we know that someone is complaining that, hey, you put my eye out. Well, that needs to be documented, but that also needs to be put in a use of force. And, and basically, you know, if it's unfounded or no, no documentation to show there's an injury. That's part of a good stat that, that we should track, that we should know that, that, um, if there's a complaint of injury. And definitely, definitely will help cover the city in regards to someone saying down the road, hey, I told the officer I was hurt. Now I'm suing you. And it's like, well, oh, we really don't have a very good report of that. Just, you know, the guy said he got hurt. Well. We didn't report that use of force. So I, I think that we need to up the ante and I know the officers don't want to, probably don't like to. I, I get it. But, but the incidences of reporting use of force, I think should be, um, broader. And then, sorry folks, but, but I, I know a lot about this area and I think it's a great opportunity for us to get some good stuff out. So pardon my, my hogging the time. Um, also, uh, when it comes to. Let's see here. Um, yo, your comment, I think I may have already said it, where you said that you wanted to leave. The display of weapons in there that I don't think it skews it at all. I think it's an amazing, awesome. Uh, stat that should always remain and that, that will help show us and it definitely shows that, that it's a de-escalation. So I think that's a great stat. Because you didn't have to use it. And then finally and lastly. Will the, will that, uh. IA plus or IA pro program, would you be able to poll? By polling the specific reporting officers, the, uh, numbers of use of force incidences. They are involved in. So if you have officer A that's involved and, you know, had a hundred and, or three hundred and two incidences. And officer A was involved in two hundred and ten of them, that would be indicative of a problem. Not necessarily that he's just, or he or she is just a busy officer, but that's a problem. So is there, you know, that, that should be able to call that information. So it will help your command staff, um, to show that if there's trends appearing. Um, it may, you know, call for more, more attention or training that may be in, that, that officer, that particular officer needs training in that area. Before we have a problem.
It absolutely can do that. And that's one of the things we're interested in. They call it early interval, early intervention warnings.
Awesome.
And staff can set. Be anything. It's an arbitrary number. Pick what you want, but. Uh, you enter a number of uses of forces when somebody reaches X number of uses of force incidents in. A set period of time, it's flagged and command staff has made aware of it to. It may mean nothing, but it could be very concerning and it needs to be looked at and it's dependent upon what those. Incidents were and who the officer is. But there are all kinds of early intervention systems in place and you set those as you want.
That's a great feature and it's not like trying to headhunt. It's a matter of trying to identify, like I said, pre-identify the problem. Get it resolved before it gets to be a big problem. And thank you. That's all I got. I apologize, folks.
Leonard, and then I'll have Cory after that.
Um, thanks, Sean. Yeah, uh, thanks, uh, thanks for doing this, uh, this use of force review for us, um. I, um, I heard with great interest that we're planning on implementing some mixed martial arts moves. Um, so. I, I think Joe made a good point on the use of pepper spray or even a taser as, as a result of, uh. Maybe, uh, focused blows. So what? I, I saw the, the departments using arm bars in some cases. Which mixed martial arts moves are we talking about implementing?
It's, it's jujitsu based and at this time I don't know exactly. Again, I'm not an expert in that area at all, but they're pain compliance techniques, wrestling type, uh, moves. Jujitsu is a form of martial art that, it's. Better known as ground fighting in layman's terms. So they're gaining control of an arrestee with. Specific maneuvers and manipulation of the body rather than striking with their hands or their knees. I don't know exactly what moves those are gonna be though, to answer your question.
Can, can you sort of walk us through the decision tree on whether you're going to use pepper spray or a taser as opposed to, uh, focus blows?
A lot of us are gonna have to do a love sore experience. It's gonna be, um. Their comfort level with using one tool or another can be, um. Their success rate using it in the past. It's gonna be the proximity to a suspect. A lot of times, um, merely drawing a taser from a holster and holding it at a low level gains compliance. Further it, holding it, pointing it at somebody gets more compliance. You still have a, and you can still engage somebody from a greater distance. To go hands-on and, and actually strike a person, you're actually have to be face to face. As far as pepper spray goes, my experience and the experience of a lot of the officers has to do with, for one, environmental factors. Um, outside pepper spray is not very effective in Oregon due to our, our weather conditions often between rain and wind. That pepper spray, even on a solid stream only goes so far. In a closed environment where my, in my experience in the past, I'd used it the most inside a house. Is myself or another officer engaging with the suspect resisting arrest. Instead of using a focus blow and risking injury to that person or injury to myself, we use pepper spray. Problem is that pepper spray doesn't differentiate between the bad guy and the good guy. Once it's in the air and it impacts something, it disperses throughout the area. Everybody gets impacted by it. So. The decision to use pepper spray often has to do with your comfort level of fighting through. That, and we've all been trained with, well, I shouldn't say we've all. A long time ago, we all got trained in the use of pepper spray to where we all got sprayed with it. And you learned how to fight your way through and realize you can battle through this and, and be okay. It's gonna have some short-term effects. Certain people's. Uh, systems in their, in their body isn't prepared to deal with that in the right way and they won't stop crying and sneezing. You can't see. And they weigh the risk of not being able to take care of themselves versus using it in the suspect. So a lot of it is just trying different tools and what an officer gets most comfortable with using that's effective without causing injury.
I, I know that some of the, um, some of the bigger judgments that we've been paying over the last couple of years, um, involve suspects. That had a mental health component in their conduct. Is there thought being given to prioritizing bringing cahoots in or, uh, mental health, um. Professionals as opposed to use of force?
I think it, it ties into our CIT training. So the short answer is yes. It depends on the circumstances of the call. Um, if we have a report of say an armed subject in the parking lot of Gateway Mall. Who has a knife or a gun who's threatening people, typically cahoots won't be responding to that, nor do they want to. Because they're, they're put in a certain sense of danger. That point, we would have to respond and use as many de-escalation techniques as possible before we get to a level of force. That's why we have the CIT training to help us get to those solutions. However, there's plenty of times where. Where some, you know, a call comes in of, of a citizen who's in that same situation, acting out in the mall parking lot. Talking to themselves, yelling, stopping on the ground. That may be a situation where you do have, use cahoots. To intervene, see if there's a mental health component, but yet we're not putting them in danger. Uh, just a couple of weeks ago, they. Went to a call over, I'm using Gateway Street, it's a busy part of town, I apologize. But they went to an apartment complex across from the mall, uh, subject. Got there and I believe, I can't remember if he had an axe or another object and threw it at the van. And the cahoots got right back in their van and drove off and said, sorry, we can't help this guy. Police need to get here and solve this problem. Short answer, we're gonna use cahoots as much as possible in situations to, you know, resolve a situation before we have to. One, dispatch an officer, two, use force. That's our goal.
So, so what I'm hearing is if the suspect is not using force and there seems to be a mental health component, then the first option would be to. Um, to, to bring some sort of mental health personnel in.
Absolutely. And fortunately, we have a great working relationship with cahoots. Uh, they have an office here in our building. We share a break room. They. Prior to COVID, they took part in our potlucks. Um, it was just a good relationship. So we're able to share a lot of information about people. Springfield's a small community. We deal with a lot of the same people over and over again. And there's a lot of times where a call will come in about a certain subject, Joe Smith, for instance. And cahoots can share information with us saying, hey, by the way, last time we dealt with this guy, this was a problem or this worked for us. And vice versa, our officers can share that with cahoots as they attend our briefings and say, hey, by the way, we went out with this guy the other day. This may be, next time we get a call on him, this may be better suited for you because he reacts better to you than he does to us. We're getting better at that. Are we perfect at it? No. Is cahoots always available? No, cause they have their share of calls to go to, but we are trying to involve them as much as possible in those scenarios.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for this report. I appreciate it, along with a lot of the other information that we've had in the last few weeks. Um, I'm a systems person, less of a tactics person. So what I see this as an opportunity. For us to. For us to look less at where we've been and to start to talk about what kind of a police department, what kind of a. for us to look less at where we've been and to start to talk about what kind of a police department, what kind of a community do we want to see in the next five years and the next 10 years? And I think that I'm really interested in us leaning into the software. And I think an important piece of that, which I I'm just going to just guess we're going to be talking about is making sure that, I mean, what goes into that software is what's going to impact what we understand. And it's only and our reporting is only as good as making sure that we all, we have a shared vocabulary. And by we, I'm talking about all of our our team of police officers that, because that's part of what I'm hearing here is that people are calling different things, different things. And we have an opportunity now going forward with this new system to get us all on the same page. So we're all talking about the same thing. And one of the things that we have was not mentioned in here, which is a piece of our challenges is just tracking what happens with interactions with gender non-conforming folks. So I'm hoping that we start to think about that. And as we think about all of these trainings and what are what's happening, one thing that we're not talking about is bias and thinking about, this is an opportunity for us to really unpack and say, where where are we going to be in 10 years and how are we going to be thinking about people? You know, I really appreciate the extra taser training in regards to what's going on in nationally. But in association with that is, let's talk about bias. Let's talk about implicit bias. Let's talk about what happens when you're under duress. And you may forget where things are. So that's my piece is that let's lean into the systems. And it's less about the tactics of what we've done in the past and thinking about where do we want to be? Where do we want to go? How do we build the police department of 10 years from now? As opposed to just sort of patching together things from where we've been. So, thank you.
I appreciate your comment and I agree with you. The, we have not done much in the way of bias training over the years. I've worked here a long time and it's something that we haven't done. We incorporated it last year. Still in the early stages, you're right. And I don't want to blame COVID for everything, but because of COVID, we did it as an online training. All officers were required to take it and did take it. But there are ways to hopefully we get out of this pandemic at some point and do some more progressive, more detailed trainings than we got to do last year.
So I saw a, just a couple of things that really jumped out, jumped out to me. So one thing on page five, so this is attachment five of a one, five of 10. When, when you look at the total occurrences there, are those total occurrences per person or can you have multiple occurrences per person?
So the 302 you're talking about?
So are there 302 unique reports there? Or we've only, are there three, are in some cases, or is there multiple reports of multiple uses of force on a single individual?
To put it simply, that's 302 people. So a use of force, you you could you could tase somebody two or three times in the same occurrence, same incident, and that's one use of force report.
I would think that that would like, and I understand that we're going to, we're going through iterations. I think that's a pro, when we talk about new software, that's probably a critical distinction to make. Because if if we're talking about 302 people and they're experiencing multiple uses of force, right? Like then that would give more, I guess, gradient gradients from from a from a training perspective. I think you you have to be really clear about what you mean when when you guys write this, when you mean occurrences, because that could mean all sorts of things.
And I agree, and I think it'll be easier to extract this data when it's entered in a different format and track more thoroughly. Like I explained earlier, I won't go into it too much because I don't have a thorough understanding of it yet either. But in the demonstrations that I saw, it looks very easy for an officer to document the different uses of force in one incident and track it to exactly what occurred. So it's not just in a written format from the officer's perspective. It's it's data that's entered that you can, you can look at a lot.
Yeah, and and that kind of format drives accuracy. So one of the other questions that I wanted you to maybe comment for it. When you look at the level of force used, your focus flows are 8% of your total uses of force. But when you look at injuries and I'm not going to, and I'm just doing back of the napkin math here to individuals and injuries to officers, there are about 25 and 35% of the total injuries that are caused by, like, just kind of walking through this. For the amount of time you're using for that type of force and the amount of injuries it's causing are a huge proportion of your your use as a force. Could you comment a little bit about that? Or, you know, maybe training that's associated to it because it's clear, just looking at the sort of data that it's got a higher chance to injure people and officers.
You're absolutely right. And that's the comments that I made earlier, I think in reference to Counselor Pisioner's question. Our new defensive tactics supervisor, Sergeant Wilson, looking at these numbers, just that you just pointed out is the same thing he did and said we're hurting people and we're hurting officers with focused blows or strikes. And that's his idea to get away from that and give officers a different option in the form of pain compliance, jujitsu type moves and training. That's what I was referencing is to get, use that to get away from the focused blows.
So one of the other questions, when we went through this in fall of 2020, when we looked at the sort of 2019 use of force and then we're looking at it again this year. One of the questions that I think is sort of critical is to begin to give context to this. Right? I, we don't know if, did we use the same amount of force in 2020? Is it 2021? Like, are we like, are we getting better? You know, how do we compare to, how do we compare to other communities? That's a natural iteration to make with this type of data. The other thing that I think is critical here, and I acknowledge you guys are going to have to work, you know, again, I'm supportive of getting the new software. But really, you can mask the officers, but it's to really get transparent about, you know, the occurrences per officer. We're not really concerned about the names, right? Because that's sort of an internal thing, but really understanding that like, you know, you know, do you have certain outliers? Are you looking for certain patterns, right? Like, are you looking for sort of the coaching and training? I think the intent long term was to kind of describe all of that in 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 the actual report. And then lastly, I would strongly encourage whoever's responsible for this is to just like if they, you know, I don't know what their background is, but if they just take some basic statistics, right? It would help them put this together and understand, because the next thing is to start sort of comparing it and contrasting it. And like, I think Cory has this really interesting, how do you go forward from here? But, you know, having, you know, taking a basic statistics class is going to help comb through the data and look for patterns for you guys to act on.
I appreciate that, Connor. I totally agree with you and that's an area that I myself am weak in. So I I get it. I don't know how or where Sergeant Massey lies in that world, but I'll certainly relay that to him. And knowing him is motivated and as excited as he is to do new things and try to please people and fill their recommendations and suggestions, I bet he will do it.
And I, and I guess I would strongly encourage you guys to go back and like the the annual report and we'll find like, I think as a council, we've got to find you a a normal spot that you're coming back when this report comes out because consistency and clarity matters. But go back and really encompass reading the, reading the Kenny settlement, because I think between the two of them, like where we're going is that that review committee, I think, has got to get tied to this actual report. And you guys line that out really well in your initial your sort of initial description. But I just want to make sure that like, you know, the whole, the whole goal here is to get better at this.
Agreed. And you brought up a point that I wanted to make while we still have a little bit of time with you. We've had an opportunity to read the report from OIR. We've had an opportunity to read the report from Rick Brazil, separate report. I wanted to point out tonight, so you're aware, that Lieutenant Crowley has taken it on himself to form a subcommittee made up of himself. Our defensive tactics sergeant, Sergeant Wilson, and two defensive tactics constructors. He's assigned them that report to read, to go through all the recommendations and look at everyone. Not to get too far off track, some of them I understand apply to it fit. I've talked to the Lane County District Attorney Patty Pearl. She's also done the same thing with her office, the state police, and the Lane County Sheriff's Office informed a subcommittee to review the recommendations. Lieutenant Crowley is doing that here on our end. And they will find areas to improve policy, training, equipment. That's underway right now. The Rick Brazil report, Lieutenant Repay, our investigations lieutenant is doing the same thing. He's formed a subcommittee and he's going through those recommendations and looking at areas for policy improvement, training, equipment. Obviously, some of them are already worse, we're already doing, they're easy to do, some of them are more difficult to do and they may take more time and we may have to be a little bit more creative. But both of those reports are welcome to the suggestions and we're making every effort to see what we can do to improve.
Yeah, well, I've worked in continuous improvement for like ever it seems like. And the one thing I can tell you is it will take time, right? Like, and just, and it's going to take putting out reports like this that we're going to sort of mark up and talk about and go, okay, that's not it. To really get our arms around, how do we get better here? So, you know, I appreciate you guys' willingness to have the discussion. And, you know, the the openness to go like progress is different than perfection here and having, you know, a lot more uncomfortable conversations is going to be the thing that drives this thing forward. Does anybody else have any other comments before we wrap up? Steve?
I suspect that new software will have the statistics that you want. I hope so. I think so. It should be that way. And the other is Cory or sorry, calling you by your first name. You say 10 years and I'd like to see it in two years. We need it now. So as soon as we can, we're getting going now and I'm glad of that. We just need to go forward.
Mr. Mayor and counselors, I just want to add that we're a forward looking organization. At right now, we're realizing we can't just look back at how we used to do things and say, well, it worked. We're going to keep on doing that. We're talking to people right now that realize we have to be self-critical and we have to be able to receive criticism to move forward and and build and become a better department. Any, any agency or any company that can't be critical of of what they're doing and look at improving in, you know, a year, two, five or 10 years later is not going to succeed. And we're committed to succeed.
Perfect.
Great, guys. And the last thing I think before we wrap up and is, you know, Nancy, I don't know that we want to wait another year before we hear about the progress on the software and some of this other stuff. So maybe, you know, you know, between Steve, you and I, we can find some time. If it's early, you know, early fall or late, the spring term, to just check in and say, how are, how are we doing on this?
Mayor, thank you for pointing that out. We did discuss that this morning, just about making it happen. And purchasing the software and getting the training lined up. We will, I will find funding for this. It's, it's for the benefit that it will provide the city. It's relatively, and it's not dirt cheap, but it's not onerously expensive either. And I also just really quickly want to thank our, our police department and Lieutenant Iwer, Lieutenant Crowley. It's been a pleasure working with them both on this, on this report. And I'm very encouraged by their openness and their receptiveness and the fact that they both took a lot of time to explain things to me as I asked questions. And I think, I think that's what, what everybody kind of just wants is that context from, from our law enforcement experts about how things really play out in their world and why some decisions get made is very helpful. The more we can engage in conversations like this, I think is very, is a growing experience for all of us.
One last thing.
Sure, Steve.
Isn't this the first interaction we've had between the council and the, and the police in conversation, constructive conversation? This is great. Keep it up.
All right, I'm going to adjourn us for five minutes and then we'll reconvene on the same same Zoom link so that we can go through, go through the public meeting. Thank you, guys. We are adjourned. I'll talk to you in a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we will call on you, please state your name, order, general location for the record. The part order of the public testimony is as follows. Anyone who has raised their hand and then anyone who has submitted email in advance, if there's remaining time, Neil will read it out loud. First item, please.
The first item is the consent calendar.
And make a motion that we approve this consent calendar.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, Neil, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Alright.
Counselor Mo.
Here, yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
I.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes, uh, five yes, zero nays and one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings tonight. Um, public hearing number one, uh, public hearing for declaration of downtown area surplus real property. Courtney Griesel and Christina Kraz are here for the staff report.
Good evening. Uh, we are here this evening, uh, for your authorization as the council to surplus downtown real property approximately point two acres located at the corner of A Street and Pioneer Parkway East. Uh, tax lot 29 is reference. I will pull it up briefly here on my screen. The property is currently a city owned, uh, parking lot for monthly lease. We have not been leasing spaces on the lot since middle of last year in anticipation of uh, sale of the property to the Springfield Utility Board, which is directly next door. Uh, this surplus property would be part of a future transaction that would uh, involve the Springfield Economic Development Agency as well. Uh, but we are requesting your authorization for surplus this evening on just tax lot 2900. If you have any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't see any. Um, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there any cards, Neil, or anybody raising their hand to speak?
Mayor will give folks a moment, but if anyone is wanting to speak to this particular issue, now is the time to raise your hand and we can activate your microphone. Uh, Mayor, I don't see anyone at this time.
Perfect. Um, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number one. Resolution declaring certain real property owned by the city of Springfield surplus and directing the city manager to offer such property for sale.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, Neil, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
I.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
I.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes and one absence. Next item, please.
You have one more public hearing tonight, a public hearing for declaration of surplus real property. Uh, Courtney Griesel and Christina Kraz are here again for the staff report.
Good evening again. Uh, we're here to discuss real property located in Glenwood. It is uh, along the Franklin South Corridor, often referred to as McVeigh Highway. Uh, we're asking you to adopt a resolution declaring a portion of uh, property which was formerly under ownership of ODOT transferred to the city's jurisdiction for future right of way and then um, portions of it transitioned from use of right of way into the ability to redevelop uh, late last year. I will also show an image of this slide. We are requesting uh, you to adopt a resolution to surplus only a portion of the parcel, the tax lot. Uh, full tax lot is actually included here extending all the way to the south and identified in yellow. Uh, the portions we are asking to surplus this evening are outlined um, in this illustration uh, in brighter yellow and equivalent to uh, about 11,800 square feet. This property would be put into redevelopment use on the adjacent parcel with Wildish and would also include an exchange of about 3,000 square feet of land from Wildish Properties along Nugget. So they would be um, purchasing the remaining balance of this portion, which is 8,800 square feet from the city uh, to complete the headquarters facility under construction right now, adjacent. Well, here, if you have any questions or for comment.
Are there any questions? Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing. Neil, is there anybody wanting to testify?
Again, if anyone would like to testify in this particular issue, please raise your hand and we can get your microphone activated. Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands for this issue.
All right, great. I'm going to close the public hearing um, and then entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two, a really resolution declaring certain real property owned by the city of Springfield surplus and directing the city manager to offer such property for sale.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, Neil, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
I.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
I.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Uh, the motion passes, five yeses, zero noes and one absent. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience. Um, we have our normal open business, but we also have an item number one and ORI group uh, presentation and Mr. Michael Janaco is here. I believe we can unmute your microphone when you're ready and also turn your camera on if you'd like.
All right. Good evening, everybody.
Hello, and we can hear you.
That's a good thing. Um, my name is Michael Janaco. It's uh, my privilege and appreciate the opportunity to address uh, you all this, this evening, mayor and council. Um, uh, as, as you know, I conducted an independent review of an officer involved shooting involving Stacy Kenny and I produced a report, which I believe is part of your council package and appreciate the opportunity to um, to talk with you for a few minutes about it. Um, obviously, in the short time that I have, um, I'm not going to be able to go over um, all of the recommendations. Um, there are 33 of them, so I'm, I'm really going to talk in the next few minutes at a very 50,000 foot level with regard to the work that I did and and what I found. Um, I looked at both the investigation of the officer involved shooting and the way in which that officer involved shooting was reviewed internally by the Springfield Police Department. Uh, focusing on the investigation for just a minute, as most, many of you likely know, uh, and invest, when an officer involved shooting occurs in your city involving an officer with your police department, the investigation, uh, the initial investigation is handed off to um, a regional group called ITFIT, which is an independent uh, group that is um, a group of uh, agencies who then conduct an independent investigation. So for years, that has been the process and your um, agency um, does not lead the investigation into the shooting. Um, I had a number of recommendations that were intended to improve that process, things that I found to be um, there was room for improvement regarding consistency of interviews and scoping of the investigation and other um, crime scene uh, protocols. Um, but um, quite candidly, in my limited time, since that, those recommendations are more directed to the ITFIT team. Um, I'm going to um, not focus um, my comments this evening on them. The good news is that the district attorney who has a large hand and sort of crafting and leading uh, that program has agreed to conduct a working group to discuss our recommendations or my recommendations in a different forum. And so DA Pearlau is, is going to be convening a working group and I've been invited to participate in that group with regard to whether the recommendations that I have uh, might be incorporated into improving uh, her process or the ITFIT process. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that and will look forward to participating. So what I'm going to focus on in, in the remaining um, time that I have is on the review process and that is when and an officer involved shooting occurs per Springfield Police Policy, there was supposed to be an administrative review of that incident internally. And that administrative review is intended to accomplish a number of objectives. One, the objective of determining whether or not the officer who used deadly force uh, was in compliance with the deadly force policy of the department, but also uh, uh, the other, the other intent is to see whether or not the department can learn, can improve training and can be better prepared on a forward going basis to learn from what has occurred in the hope that that learning will reduce the likelihood or the uh, or the uh, future occurrences of deadly force, which is um, consistent with uh, best and progressive practices of policing throughout the country. And it looks great on paper. What I found though is even though the mechanism for that kind of review existed within the policies of your police department and when in fact, there actually was a review board that was convened in this case um, and identified uh, issues actually that I think were helpful, that there really wasn't any follow through with regard to either identification of the issues that the department itself had identified. There was no training coming out of those issues that are identified and no remedial action apparently whatsoever with regard to issues that were identified with the idea of improving um, improving the training and improving the performance of officers on a forward going basis. And I think that is probably one of the biggest issues that I discovered with regard to um, uh, the way in which the process worked or maybe more accurately, the way in which the process didn't really effectively work. So our rec, my recommendations are intended to develop policies and protocols so that there is follow through on a forward going basis and to improve that review process in a way in which when issues are identified that are deserving of training or deserving of remediation or deserving of policy changes, that in fact, there's actual follow through on them. I also found that there were a number of issues that the review board in our, in my view could have identified to improve the organization but didn't identify. So for example, as you um, likely know, this involved uh, an encounter with an individual who had a history of mental illness and was behaving in a way in which um, it appeared that um, Stacy Kenny was going through some mental health crisis during the encounter. Yet the officers failed to identify that during the encounter and also failed to effectively plug into information that the department had in their computer data tracking, tracking database. And the questions were, why wasn't the officer apprised of the information that had already been supplied to the Springfield Police Department because the family had actually visited with members of the police department and told them that there's their, um, their child had a um, issues with mental health and wanted the department to be apprised of them. But that question, which I think is an important question during the review process should have been approached, asked and hopefully answered. And it wasn't addressed at all. It wasn't addressed at all. Um, there was other force that happened that preceded the shooting of Kenny. Um, numerous uses of the taser, numerous punches to the face, to the body, to the head, the attempt to pull out uh, Kenny from the car after it had stopped through the window of the car. And um, none of that other force was ever evaluated, even though the chief in his memo to the board asked that, that information be evaluated. It didn't get evaluated. And even after it didn't get evaluated, the chief didn't send it back for the evaluation he had actually asked for. There were other issues that um, were apparent from my review of the incident such as de-escalation. Um, as many of you may know, uh, the use of de-escalation is a um, increasingly important are a tool that officers are trained to use. And in fact, Springfield trains its officers on principles of de-escalation. Yet there was almost no evidence of any effort to de-escalate the situation. In my view, if there had been, this whole incident and the use of deadly force may have been avoided. Something the department did identify is the danger and risk of an officer entering a car in order to effectuate an arrest because of what might happen if the officer enters the car and the driver of the car drives away, which is exactly what happened in this case. That issue was identified by the review board, but never addressed by the review board. No training was provided to officers about the dangers of getting into a car that's occupied with the um, driver still in the driver's seat. Um, and no remedial action was given. In fact, the sergeant who entered the car was never talked to about how dangerous that technique is. Um, so uh, so we did find in our review, a number of issues that in our view could have been identified and weren't identified. The final thing I would say, because I think my time is, is drawing near, is that um, at the, after an officer involved shooting, um, one thing that more and more progressive police agencies do is have the leader of that organization, the chief of police, if you will, at least offer condolences, sympathy to the remaining family members about the loss of life um, that has occurred. And in this case, that did not happen. That did not happen. And the reason that was um, put forward as to why the Kenny family was not approached by the chief of police, no phone calls, no sorry for your loss, no condolences, is for the fear of litigation. And the fear of litigation in our view and in most progressive police agencies should not be an obstacle for that kind of human um, humanness of that kind of empathy, because you can feel sorry for a family's lost without admitting liability. Um, those two do not connect and it was a thad in my view, that that communication was never done. And when I talked to the Kenny family, they also felt that there was something missing in the way in which the city of Springfield communicated to them in the sense that that conversation was never had. Um, so I um, will wrap up here in my um, closing remarks. I um, certainly available, uh, should any of you on council or you, Mr. Mayor. Should any of you counsel or you, Mr. Mayor, have any questions about my report? But I know that you were not required to hear from me pursuant to the litigation or the settlement agreement and appreciate that you did take some time out of your important meeting to hear from me. And for that, I'm grateful. And I'm also obviously available to answer any questions any of you might have about anything in my report and my review. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for presenting to us. My plan right here was to let you get let open this up for questions and then maybe save some of the commentary in discussion elements for when we get out of public testimony or business from the audience. Before we get started, Nancy, could you help maybe provide some guidance for people to frame up their questions?
Sure. And I may call on Christine too, if she if she has any additional thoughts. First of all, I think it's important to recognize, and I think we all recognize the tragedy here. And I want I want to preference my comments by saying that. I would ask counsel just to be mindful that although this particular incident has been has reached a settlement with the family, we have one, at least one active lawsuit against the city pertaining to use of force. Obviously, there are two different scenarios. But yeah, I would just caution you to be judicious in in how you phrase your questions. And but I think more importantly, I I wasn't here when this when this incident took place and it is it's weighed heavily on my mind. And I know, you know, offering condolences to the family, your your point, Mr. Janaco, is is it was right on it. I want to, I just myself wanted to say that. And, you know, I just it weighs heavily on my heart and I know that it has been a real loss to the Kenny family. So that's all I have.
Christina, did you have anything you wanted to add before I opened it up for questions?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I have to add is that our office, primarily Mary Bridget Smith, has been working with the police department as well as the police association and the Kenny family through their attorney on looking at updates to the use of force policy in part to look at some of these recommendations as well as the recommendations in the Thurston Report prepared by Mr. Brazil. And so I would ask the council to ask questions about Mr. Janaco's report, but but know that staff and legal counsel are working through that use of force policy with the police department and more information about that will be forthcoming from Mary Bridget.
All right, Counselor Steer.
Thank you. Mr. Janaco, I want to thank you so much for your report just now. And I can assure you that nothing we do tonight is going to be any more important than what we just heard. I would like to ask, so you you said that there was not an effort made to evaluate the mental health of Stacy Kenny. Is there a procedure that the police have to evaluate the mental health of someone that they've stopped? And was it just not followed? Or is there a procedure to begin with?
Yes. It's an excellent question and maybe I can enlarge this a bit. So the initial officer who first stopped Kenny and then stopped Kenny and then stopped Kenny, there were three stops actually before the force was used. There were certainly indicia based on the report and based on the interview and based on other evidence that was collected during the investigation that Stacy Kenny was behaving erratically, behaving in a way in which it could be suggestive of somebody going through a mental health crisis or who had some mental health issues. And it would have been helpful to learn through the investigation whether or not the officer identified those issues and have targeted questions asked of that officer about whether or not there were anything of these of these indicia that caused him to think that perhaps the individual he was stopping was going through a mental health crisis. But unfortunately, the investigation didn't go there. So we never learned through the interview of the initial stopping officer what he knew or what he didn't know, what his thought process was about that or what his thought process wasn't. And that's because the initial investigation didn't go into that area with the individual, with the individual officer. Nor was there any follow up interview when Springfield did their inquiry. So those questions largely remained unanswered as a result of the insufficiency of the investigation. But there was certainly indicia that the officer might have been able to pick up on. The second piece is that when the final or third stop was made, instead of trying to negotiate or here develop a dialogue with Stacy Kenny, the officer instead chose to rush up to the car and start to break out the window of the car of the drivers driver on the driver's side. The sergeant broke out the window on the passenger side. And then that was preceded by immediately going to force punching Kenny in the face repeatedly and then trying to pull him out from the window of the driver's seat, which was impossible to do because Stacy Kenny was still belted in to the car with a seatbelt. So those are all the questions that ended up not being reviewed internally, council members.
I I know that you're essentially reviewing the review here. I guess what I'd like to do is just ask, and this might go to the city manager or to the council, is is there going to be any action taken on the basis of what Mr. Janaco has told us as far as addressing it with the department?
Um, maybe we can save that conversation for just a little bit while let Counselor Pictionary ask his question and we'll come back to it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Janaco, it's a pleasure to see you and hear you. I've read the report actually several times. I've got a long history of law enforcement. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but
I am. Thank you.
Okay. And so I come from it from a probably a different angle than most. And I was prepared when I read it to, you know, raise my eyebrows and roll my ears eyes back and yada yada. And I was going to tell you first off that I appreciate how you dissected it. I appreciate your thoroughness. I really appreciate how you look at the interagency deadly force investigation team investigative team. I think that that was a very, a very insightful look at saying this is a weak link. And I agree, it really is. And I'm glad, I'm really happy when you told me that DA Perlo is is welcoming to look at it and review. We'll see if that makes changes, but but you're spot on. There's definitely some insufficiencies there. So I appreciate that. I also, I also know that, you know, you have a plethora of recommendations and and I do, I will tell you that I agree wholeheartedly with with most. There is some that I don't necessarily agree with, but there's also some that I think is already implemented. So it's not like a cross the word change of every single thing that you recommended, but it certainly allows for people to say, okay, are we already doing this? And if not, how can we do this better? And and you know, as well as I know, you know, intoxication levels, for example, play a huge role on human behavior and what preceded the event. But but a person has to look at this with an open mind and and not get so tunnel vision to think that this is this has got to be, you know, intoxicated person. I don't know. I'm not going to get into his mind. I don't want to get into his mind. And it's really easy for you and for us to backseat quarterback and 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 do 2020 hindsight. I get that, but I appreciate the overall, how do I put it, the 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 direction in which you came from is was not in my mind, wasn't one of these, but it was really dissecting and looking for where the improvements could be made. And and you found a bunch of them and I really look forward to seeing a lot of these implemented to where we can really be a pristine agency. And it hurts to know that there is a lot of change that needs to be made. But it's also awesome to see my fellow colleagues sitting here, listening and and soaking this in and willing in our agency, our police agency, very much willing to look at this and saying, okay, we need to have a, this is a reality check and we need to, you know, get up to speed. And I anyway, I'm done, but but do know that I'm going to be looking at this and reading it again and and totally look at where I can or the council can work with the PD and through the city manager to to make some good positive changes and to prevent any unnecessary harm, whatever whatever level of harm it is from a scratch to unfortunately death. If those any of those can be avoided, then that's what we have to do.
Uh, Councilmember Pictionary, I really appreciate your comments, particularly based as a result of your experience in law enforcement. So thank you. Your your Monday morning quarterbacking analogy is interesting because I kind of understand that hindsight's 2020, but I embrace the idea of being a Monday morning quarterback because that's what the NFL does. And why do they do it? They do it because they want to get better, right? They do that quarterbacking on Monday because they want to get better and that's the whole goal for this report.
And that's how I interpreted that. It looks like we're we're watching the tapes. So.
All right. Okay, I had one question before before I let you go. I think you said there were 33 recommendations in the in the report. Which one is the number one? Like if you were going to say, you guys need to do this first day before you adjourn the meeting, which one would it be?
All right, Mayor. That's a hard one, but I'm going to start with my last one, which is one I did mention, which is perhaps a commitment from the city that the next time a tragic situation happens and there's a loss of life to one of your constituents and there are family members remaining, that somebody in the organization extend apologies and condolences for the loss of that life, even if it was quote justified to extend those kinds of extend that kind of sympathy, I think goes a long way to starting the healing process.
I appreciate that. And I I think we're all committed to that.
Don't let your lawyers talk you out of it, though, please.
Maybe just how to say sorry is really the the best way to do it. There's nothing wrong with saying sorry and I'm I think it should, I mean, I would be comfortable saying that coming from an elected elected position.
Leonard, do you have one more thing?
Yes, one more thing. I I guess what I want to do is just repeat my question from earlier. I who is going to make the decision which if any of the 33 recommendations are going to be adopted?
Thank you, Counselor Steer. I've already been in discussion with Acting Capacity Chief Nyward. And I I have to say that the Springfield Police Police Department has been agreeable to these recommendations. And we know, obviously, I can't speak for them precisely, but I know that there is a willingness and I would say even an eagerness to to do better and to change and move forward. I view this as something that I would work on together with the department. Because ultimately, you know, whomever is running the police department is accountable for the actions of their employees, their officers, their sworn and non sworn personnel. But as the city manager, I am ultimately accountable for all of our employees and all of our actions that we take in the city. So it it's important to me personally to see these changes happening. I was, like I mentioned earlier this evening, I'm very encouraged with the progress that I I see already. And I know that we have more to do. I was just, you know, kind of jotting down a couple of notes on on myself as far as what I wanted to focus on moving forward. I think obviously the recommendations from Mr. Janaco is would be a foundation that we can build on for training, for our policies. We've already updated the use of force policy to include the recommendations from this report. That policy is now on the Springfield Police Department's website, so you can go and look at it. They worked hard to do that and and to work with the labor unions to to put forth the policy. So we're already in the works of of working on what I call, you know, we're just methodically going to go through this. Some of the things that we can do, we can look at as here are some more short term things that we know we can do in the immediate. Some of the recommendations will have to be within a negotiated context. And then other recommendations are not necessarily within the scope of our control. For instance, the ones relating to ITFIT, but I'm I'm heartened tonight to hear that those are being addressed as well. Overall, just my overall philosophy with this department is hoping for some meaningful change around promoting de-escalation, increased mental health training, really protecting the public and our officers. So I I really, I thought the suggestions about using different types of holds rather than blows was a creative idea that I really appreciated. And I'm I'm encouraged by what I see with the department and I will continue to work with them on that.
Well, if if it's possible, I for one would like to request that if any, if the decision's ultimately made not to adopt any of Mr. Janaco's recommendations, then I I would appreciate it being run by the council.
Absolutely.
And I don't, I, Mr. Janaco, as we get into this, I think we're done with our Q and A for you. So you feel you're welcome to to stay and listen to the conversation, but don't feel like you're obligated to stay that we're we've got another question coming your direction.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll I'll hang in there.
Um, and Leonard, my sense of this is in in general, I'm supportive of like 99% of these, right? By the time we dig into them, we got to get some facts about them and things like that. And especially with the roadmap that the Brazil report lays out, really what I would like to do is, you know, is have a couple of counselors sit on a subcommittee and provide some sort of guidance from, you know, about getting us to agree on how these conversations are going to happen. You know, and, you know, get get some sort of understanding about, because there's going to be some details about training that come up that are going to inform budgets and and thing like that. That way we can support Nancy and the staff through this. I think we're ready for that conversation because we now have got the like basically the three foundational reports in place. So Steve and I will be talking about it on Friday. I think that like, you know, a model I would think about would be like the code rewrite governance committee, right? Like where we've got people that are getting regular updates, providing some guidance, and then we come back to the council and kind of think about and kind of head not a general direction that we, yes, we're doing this. All right. Any other questions? All right, then I think we're ready to proceed to business for the audience. Next item, Neil.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We have three hands raised and we remind folks if they would like to participate in business from the audience, they could just raise their hands. Our first speaker is June Father Gill and she is followed by Kirsten Vignetta. And June, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. This is June Father Gill. I'm at 31730th Street in Springfield and also the pastor at Everett United Methodist Church, just down the street from City Hall. And I would like to comment today about the use of force by our police, Springfield police. In my experience as a local downtown pastor to a church that feeds and provides care for low income and unhoused residents, police presence change can sometimes be helpful, but it can also sometimes escalate situations. I have appreciated the police who take the time and put in energy to getting to know myself. I have appreciated the police who take the time and put in energy to getting to know myself and the community, particularly the unhoused community. This builds trust is a good step toward reduction of the need for use of force. I would also recommend that police officers partake of the de-escalation training provided by Whitebird Kahoots. They don't already. These basic skills of slowing down and listening can go far in most situations. I also recommend police seek out training and nonviolent communication or compassionate communication. This has helped me find ways to deal effectively and respectfully with conflicts in life, home, and even on the streets. I believe we can and must put a stop to violence and racism in our community, including in the culture of our police department and ourselves. And I thank you for listening to me today.
Uh, our next speaker is Kirsten Vignetta, followed by Dan Isaacson. And Kirsten, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Kirsten and I'm a resident of Ward Two. I first wanted to thank City Council, Mayor Van Gordon and Nancy Newton for taking policing matters seriously and starting to take action. And I also wanted to deeply thank Mr. Janaco for bringing some humanity to today's session. That was really refreshing. I read the use of force report that was developed and I listened to today's working session. And there are promising developments such as the prospect of procuring use of force documentation software that will improve SPD's records tracking police interactions. However, the issue remains that this software's utility will only be as good as the validity of the data reported. And so I guess my question is if this is largely left up to officers who have it in their interest to minimize reports of inequity or excessive use of force, how reliable is this data? The SPD has then also stated that they will be forming a force review committee, which is a positive step, I believe. But to date, the four people that are slated to be on the committee are all internal to SPD. So again, it's hard for me to believe, given the insular camaraderie within most police departments, that integrity towards the community at large will always come above protecting another officer's ass, pardon my language, but especially if that officer is someone that you know, that you care about, and that you feel is part of your police family. And so how will the force review committee ensure integrity and transparency? And how will they interact with the public and hold themselves and their officers accountable? Finally, I also noticed that the officer trainers, the officer trainings offered in the last year were especially minimal in terms of de-escalation tactics and trainings pertaining to addressing suspects with medical distress, which I assume would also involve mental health issues. And so the, and the topic that was actually a lot of the most training was firearms training, followed by crowd control training. So this is the kind of training emphasis that seems troublesome to me in light of recent developments within SPD. I appreciate that we're slowly moving forward, but clearly SPD's self-reflexivity thus far has been lackluster. And I think that more transparent forms of police accountability need to be established if we want any chance of establishing trust between SPD and the community. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, our next speaker is Dan Isaacson, followed by Jenny Potter. And Dan, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hello, my name is Dan Isaacson and I'm the incoming president of NAMI Lake County, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, the co-chair of the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Lake County. I come to this topic through trauma and tragedy as well. My best friend of 25 years was shot and killed in an eerily similar circumstance. After having spoken with the Kenny family, I can tell you that this is a club that you, neither of you, any of you, want to be a part of. The search for answers to questions that cannot be answered never leaves. And when your son or friend dies of brain cancer, when you tell someone about it, the response is immediate and empathetic. When you tell them that it was involved with a police incident, the response is immediate judgment of the perceived actions of your son or friend. You are denied the humanity desperately needed for your own grief and healing. And I cannot express enough how important that is to offer to families. That was the biggest takeaway I had from his report. There are specific, low budget, high impact, proven programs that you as a council can implement to aid those experiencing trauma as a result of any violent act by anyone, police or otherwise. And I will be reaching out to each of you in the hopes that soon we can discuss them. I truly look forward to being able to have that conversation. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Jennifer Potter. Jennifer is followed by Ginny Osteen. And Jennifer, I think we've lost Jennifer. Let me see if she is still here. Jennifer, your hand went down. So we'll go to Ginny Osteen. Okay, Jennifer's back. Sorry. World of Zoom. Jennifer, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Jennifer Potter and I live in Ward Three. And I really appreciate the council taking the time to listen to the report today. And I appreciate the concern about giving an apology to the family. I think that's a really important step that the council needs to take. And I think that we really just need to implement the recommendations as soon as possible of both this report and the Brazil report and then any upcoming reports. I think there's an investigation going on right now about a sexual harassment issue and one into the chief. So as soon as those reports are available, I hope that those are made public and that those recommendations are implemented. Yeah, thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Ginny Osteen and currently our last speaker. And Ginny, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Hi, I'm, I'm assuming you can hear me. Um, I've kind of rewritten my testimony, so I'm kind of winging it here. But first, I just want to say that so far, well, the reports today and during the, both of them were were sad and, you know, disturbing, but also so refreshing. And not just because, but thank you again for your humanity, as other speakers have said already. But over the past few years, we've been saying we want transparency from our city council. And you always tell us that, well, we cannot meet without you being here. But then you say you're going to do something and then we don't really hear what's going on. But this is what we mean by transparency. What are the employees of the city that are paid for by our property taxes and other taxes doing? And, you know, from filling potholes to mo, you know, doing something in the parks to using force necessarily or unnecessarily, how much, how often do the residents or people in the city, how much force, how brutal are they? And then what happens when someone gets killed, you know? I mean, there was, with the Kenny family, they, um, there was an article in the paper. It was in, when he, when Stacy Kenny was shot, it was in the paper for just a couple days that it happened. And then we never really knew what happened until, what was it, a year and a half later? Wow, the largest, you know, lawsuit settlement in the, in Oregon's history. And then you had to drill down and find the actual lawsuit to see what actually happened. So, um, so I think the community, all of the community needs, needs and wants to know this. And I think, and what we need to know is these reports are the result of this, of the settlement of the Ken, with the Kenny family. They filed suit because they wanted reform in the police department. They wanted the public to know what was going on. They wanted the public to know what had happened to their child. And I know Mr. Janaco, I'm sorry if I mispronounced, said that he wasn't required to be here, but to speak to us. But the report was required by the Kenny settlement, as was the first annual and the preceding annual use of force reports and future and other reforms. Thank you.
Mayor, that appears to be all of our speakers for this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up for any council response before we move on. Corey.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who has been a part of the meeting, first of all, work session in this session. I also, excuse me, appreciate that we are finally digging in to having these shared conversations about our public safety and policing issues. And I, like I said earlier, I believe we have an opportunity to rebuild and create a modern, effective police department. I like to win, just so you all know, and I want Springfield to show how this hard, challenging work can be done with professionalism, with compassion and with humanity. And I want us to lead and I want us to succeed. And I hear, we have heard the public and we have read the reports. And I think now is the time for us to just roll up our sleeves and figure out how to push this work forward and create the police department that suits and fits Springfield. And that's what I have to say about that.
Mayor Lee.
Uh, yes, I had a couple of things. Just if I can cast a broad brush to the community, we don't always remember everything that you'd like us to talk about or to mention or to respond to. So if there's something that hasn't been mentioned, that, I mean, Ginny mentioned, you know, street repairs and different things like that. If there's something that isn't coming up in conversation, come and ask us. Uh, I can't really think of anything other than something that might be a legal issue that we can't talk about, something that's in, in the middle of a process that we wouldn't be willing to, to discuss. So, but we, but if we haven't gotten to it, let us know. Because we don't, we don't always remember everything in line that you're looking for information on or, or answers to. The other thing I wanted to mention was I wanted to thank Mr. Isaacson from NAMI. My background is in social services, quite, quite a bit of my background is there. And his point tonight of talking about people's reactions to incidents of somebody losing their life is so on point. And I have to admit that it's a, it's something that I haven't necessarily been thinking of recently, but it sure brought back a lot of my background, a lot of my previous experience. And I, I appreciate what he said. I appreciate the point he made. It's, it's a very strong point that needs to be made. We need to be reminded of it all the time, is that we just, we need to be mindful of other people. And, and we need to be mindful of, of there, that they are not, from our perspective, they're from their own perspective and their, their own individuals. And we need, just need to stay mindful of that. And so I just really appreciate the, the point he made tonight.
All right, great. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the city council. You have one item. Committee appointments for the budget committee. Neil Obringer is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As follow up to the budget committee interviews that were held last week on April 12, staff has brought back the names of Darlene Reich and Stephen Schmunk for appointment to the, to the budget committee. With that, I am here if you have any questions.
All right. Is there any questions or a motion?
I could make a motion that we appoint Darlene Rash aboard three or for Ward Three, Stephen Schmuck for Ward Four, the budget committee with terms expire in December 31st, 2023.
Record. It's been moved in second. Neil, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
All right.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley. And that was a yes from you, Counselor Rodley. Sorry, you froze for a moment.
Yes, she froze.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
All right.
The motion passes six to zero. Uh, next item, please.
Any other business from the city council?
Is there any other business? I have two quick items, but I'll give, okay, so two quick items. The Saturday is desserts for dinner, so you have an opportunity to buy one of 11 boxes left. I'm looking at you, Counselor Pictionary.
Only 11.
We're almost to the finish line.
Yay.
But it's a good opportunity to serve homeless families in Springfield, support local bakers and make sure that you're out supporting G Street Oasis. And I'll be handing out the boxes when you come by and pick them up. Service with a smile. Um, the, the last thing, so United Front virtually was last week. So I had the opportunity to go and lobby our federal delegation with Springfield staff, Eugene staff, Lake County staff, as well as elected officials from the United, uh, United Front partners. Just a really good opportunity and reminder to get in front of folks back east and talk about our shared, uh, shared priorities. And especially highlight things like Franklin Boulevard and Glenwood. By far, every meeting we heard was, it's our number one shared priority is to finish that boulevard. We did that one for you, Steve, and to talk about, and to talk about the 42nd Street levy, which is quietly an issue that we just need to make sure is addressed here. I'm really proud of the staff work. They did a lot of work putting everything together. And I'm really grateful with how the rest of the entities showed up. And we could talk to our, our delegation about what we need in Lake County. All right, next item, please.
Mayor, next item is business from the city manager.
I know business this evening. Thank you.
And any business from the city attorney?
No business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.